Buscaino has committed to finding more supportive housing with 311 new units in San Pedro alone.
The solution is housing, permanent housing with supportive services.
And I do believe that we can end homelessness.
One success story Diane Vigil shown earlier in the story. She has now found housing.
You know, some of us do want to get help and so I'm one of those people.
But for Jared, life on the streets continues.
Is there a drug program you could take now?
There's still, there's still programs out there that are free, yeah. But most of them, you know, that's just my excuse. Most of them cost money, so.
So that's an excuse?
Yeah.
For some, the vicious habit of homelessness and drug addiction is a difficult one to break. Even when people are ready for help, it's a struggle for city leaders to keep up with the growing need. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Now, some of the extra services city leaders plan to address in their supportive housing plans include services for alcoholism, substance abuse, mental illness, health counseling, and domestic violence. While remembering those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, saying thanks to men and women in uniform, and making it easier for war veterans to find work. All these stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles Fire Department's West Bureau hosted a Patriot Day and National Day of Service to mark September 11th. The ceremony was held at the LAFD Historical Society Museum and Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Hollywood. Councilmember David Rue, who joined Councilmember Mitchell Farrell at the event, said 9/11 reflects the best of our men and women in uniform.
It's about respecting those who are risking their lives every day to help others.
It is a date to remind us all to value what we have and to never forget all those that gave up everything.
The Hollywood Chamber of Commerce held its 22nd Annual Police and Firefighters Appreciation Day BBQ, which happened to fall on 9/11 for the first time. Most of the food was donated by Hollywood restaurants and nightclubs, and plenty of volunteers and celebrities like Joe Montegna from Criminal Minds came out to give a helping hand and say thanks to local police and firefighters.
We do this every year to show our appreciation for the things that they do for us, putting their lives on the line to protect the community.
The first-ever Veterans Career Fair was held recently at the Battleship Iowa in San Pedro, featuring more than 50 employers offering more than 350 jobs to veterans throughout Southern California. Councilmember Joe Buscaino's office took part in the event. The fair provided veterans with on-the-spot job interviews, resume assistance, and job placement assistance. It's a project that costs under $1 million, but it could save tens of thousands of daily commuters a major headache. Anna Marcos has more on the latest road improvements in Granada Hills.
City leaders admire their handiwork and then try it by crossing in this brand-new pedestrian crosswalk. The crosswalk is part of the makeover at this intersection of Balboa Boulevard and San Fernando Road in Granada Hills.
This is the connectivity, the artery that connects the Santa Clarita Valley to Los Angeles.
These projects sometimes look simple but require a lot of coordination.
The project built new left- and right-turn dedicated lanes coming off San Fernando, a lane going south on Balboa Boulevard, and new lights and a traffic signal in one of the busiest intersections in the North Valley.
In 2007, we studied all the major intersections here in the San Fernando Valley, and we realized this is one of the worst. We've got over 20,000, 20,000 commuters each and every day that are going back and forth between the Santa Clarita Valley and the city of Los Angeles.
Tens of thousands of people every day that now have a smoother commute, that it's easier to travel, and safer as well.
City leaders have made other improvements along this busy corridor, and they say these small projects can really change the quality of life for thousands of commuters, one project at a time. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Improvements made along the corridor include a new traffic light on Balboa Boulevard at the Knollwood Shopping Center. While the historic two-day climate change summit hosted by Mayor Eric Garcetti was front and center not only in LA but on social media as well, here's some more of the summit in this week in tweets. The mayor's office posted a video of day one of the summit giving a recap of the day's events. They also tweeted a pic of Hollywood director James Cameron onstage writing, "Day one of U.S.-China Summit: Fascinating Discussion on Food Policy with James Cameron and Chef Sam Cass." They also wrote, "This is a critical time in history. Our calling to #ActOnClimate couldn't be clearer." Another post read, "Mankind has to rise to this incredible existential challenge." At JerryBrownGov, #ClimateCities, #ActOnClimate. And that's a look at this week in tweets. While this week we spotlight one of the NoHo Arts District's thriving small businesses, as Gil Reyes reports, the price of pastries may be going up.
Business is booming at this North Hollywood restaurant popular for its pies.
This area is up and coming.
Vincent Kim is owner-operator of Republic of Pie in the NoHo Arts District, one of several locally-owned businesses, not chains, to set up shop in the area over the past decade. This section of the valley is known for its contemporary theaters and galleries, and it continues to change.
There's a lot of investment, a lot of new hotels coming in, new restaurants, many retail outlets and different kind of businesses. It's a fun, exciting place to be here in the NoHo Arts District.
Area Councilman Paul Krikorian presents Kim a city certificate of recognition for his contributions to the neighborhood's artsy flavor, and listens to his concerns.
Well, I think as the business owner, I think minimum wage increase is gonna be a big issue.
Kim says he may have to lay off workers when the city's $15-an-hour minimum wage goes into effect in 2020. The city plans to raise wages slowly each year till then to cushion the blow on business owners. But Kim says he'll more than likely have to raise prices on pies.
Yeah, I think that's what's on my mind right now, so.
Still, patrons we spoke to had mostly positive reviews regarding the councilman's work and the improvement of the neighborhood overall when it comes to public safety and new businesses popping up.
It's pretty fun. Like, we don't have to drive much, like, drive so far to go to this cute cafe or like, some cute places. Just, it's been fun.
Offering a slice of Manhattan Soho in NoHo. In the NoHo Arts District, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The city's slow transition to the $15 minimum wage begins next summer. While the Miracle Mile turns into an artist showcase, an eclectic festival in Venice highlights the area's unique offerings, and lobster lovers, get ready for the ultimate feast. All this in this week's Things to Do. Tar Fest is an annual free music, arts, and culture event in LA's Miracle Mile District, produced by LaunchLA, where dozens of the nation's most distinctive emerging artists, performers, and cultural innovators come together and showcase their talents and ideas. LaunchLA believes exposure to the arts enhances quality of life and strengthens community through the shared appreciation of creative expression in all its forms and hybrids. LaunchLA is passionate about providing artists with quality opportunities to present themselves and their creations that reflect our times to a curious and enthusiastic audience. Now in its 13th year, the event takes place on Saturday, September 26th, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the La Brea Tar Pits in Hancock Park, located at 5801 Wilshire Boulevard. The Abbott Kinney Festival, now in its 31st year, takes place along a mile-long stretch of the world-famous Abbott Kinney Boulevard, arguably the coolest block in America. The Boulevard's eclectic boutiques, artisan eateries, and influential art galleries infuse the festival with a local flavor that makes this event unique and not to be missed. Join the fun on the last Sunday in September for a day of fun, food, and entertainment, while you soak in the spirit of the sunny beachside community of Venice. For more, visit AbbottKinney.org. If you love lobster, then head on over to the Port of L.A.'s Lobster Festival and Music Weekend. The event features fresh-discount Maine lobster meals flown in fresh daily and cooked on the spot with plenty of free entertainment. Lobster lovers enjoy a scenic outdoor park along LA's historic waterfront and shops at Porzo Call. After feasting on luscious lobster meals, you can enjoy dancing, street performers, tall ships, shopping for arts and crafts, and musical performances by some of today's best up-and-coming acts. The event takes place September 25th through the 27th at Birth 76 at the port. Visit LobsterFest.com for more info. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Ingledor Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carrasco, Coria Martinez, Ofero Price, Rue Weston, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I do want to thank everybody for being here Tuesday, September 22nd. This council is your council and all is welcome. What's our first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Committed to resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, say yes Tuesday. Now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Mr. Buscaino to lead us in today's flag salute. If everyone can please rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eyes on our flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Why don't we go through the agenda?
Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1A, B, H, I, K, L, M, T, and W may be received and filed inasmuch as the items have been paid, rescinded, or are owner-occupied, single-family dwellings.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order on those items. So do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 1.
Okay, then let's move forward on item 2 then. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes. And the ordinance will be held over till October 6th. If not, reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, I believe we should get there before the day is out. Just remind me when we get to 12. Let's move on to the next section. Items, what, 3 through 17?
Yes, items 3 through 17 are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to call item 15 special for Mr. Sadio.
Then let's do that. Members, any other specials? 3 through 15, any other specials? Mr. Krikorian?
Please, Mr. President.
11 for Mr. Krikorian. Let us prepare to vote on those remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That brings us where?
Items 18 through 34 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Cards on items 32, 20, 26, 29, 32, and 33.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on the remaining items.
And, excuse me, Mr. President, there is a request to call item 30 special for Mr. Sadio.
Then we shall do that as well. So let's vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, items 35 through 37 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so now do we, without objection? Oh, I lost you. What items?
Items 35 through 37 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members. Mr. Bonin?
Item 35 for Mr. Bloomingfield.
35. Any other? I don't see any. Let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Let's continue.
Items 38 through 45 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Bonin?
Call item 39 special, please.
Item 39 special per Mr. Bonin, and I'm told to hold item 41 as well. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 38, 39, and 43.
Okay, let's then prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, with the council's permission, I'm gonna ask my wife to come up here and sit next to her husband. Her birthday was yesterday. Happy birthday, babe. That brings us where?
Item 46 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Mr. Krikorian, can you give us any guidance on?
Well, I can, but I've got something more important to do first.
Well, I appreciate that. Everybody hug her. That's how I stay out of trouble, God. I've been married 35 years. That's how you do it.
Item 46, Mr. President, is a city attorney recommendation of settlement. Both the Claims Board and the Budget and Finance Committee considered the matter unanimously. Both unanimously agreed with the city attorney's recommendations, so unless members have questions or concerns, that can be resolved in open session.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Do we have, do we have to take, this has already been, public comments been satisfied. So let's vote on this item. Let's open-
Mr. President, and for the case entitled Anita Bush versus Anthony Pelicano et al., the recommendation is to authorize the city attorney to pay settlement in the amount of $200,000.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, just for the record, for ordinances, items 18 through 24, the ordinances will be held over to October 6th if not reconsidered with 12 members. This brings council to general public to presentations or items called special.
At this time, we have a very, members, with your indulgence, and before we get to the presentations, I want to go to item 41. We have a former colleague and dear friend with us. He is the former president of this Los Angeles City Council. He's now our Secretary of State. He is Alex Padilla. Would you please join us at the center table? Mr. Padilla, give him a round of applause. So, members, Mr. Secretary Padilla is here today on a very important matter. He gave us a call. I chatted with him personally, and I felt that it was our responsibility to have this conversation. We're so glad to have you here, and I want you to know that your chair feels great. Okay, so with that, Secretary Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, I'm sure the chair feels great. It looks great from here, too. So kudos to you on doing a great job. And I appreciate just a couple of minutes in a very busy agenda to come and speak on behalf of the resolution that is in front of you. You know, we reached out to the president's office because I've known for a long, long time, from my days on city council, and ever since, the weight that the voice of the city of Los Angeles carries when it comes to important statewide issues, not just politics. And before is an issue that's as fundamental as it gets. Today is National Voter Registration Day. Couple of years now, we've been building this movement across the country to bring awareness and attention to the importance of registering to vote and for people participating in elections. The same conversation y'all entertained last year when the measure was placed on the ballot. The same conversation y'all entertained last year when the measure was placed on the ballot and approved by the voters to consolidate municipal elections with statewide, uh, elections. Well, increasing turnout is great, but you can only turn out people to vote once they're registered. Statewide, there are still nearly 6.7 million people who are eligible to register to vote but haven't taken that step. County-wide here, it's, uh, close to one and a quarter million. And so, uh, we sponsored legislation this year that's been approved by the Assembly, approved by the Senate, is now on the desk of the governor, that would allow us to use just modern-day technology to systematically register people deemed to be eligible, uh, by sharing information between the Department of Motor Vehicles and the Secretary of State's office for purposes of voter registration. Uh, over the next couple of years, we can literally extend the franchise to millions of eligible Californians, and that can only help our cause when it comes to getting more people involved with democracy. So happy to answer any questions, but I'll leave it at that and respectfully ask for your support.
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Secretary, you know that this council, I believe, has been very forward-thinking where it comes to any kind of, uh, creative way where we can get more people actually register, but importantly, to actually come out and vote. And, uh, if you could maybe let us know where, where, where is this now? And, and, and how important could a, a vote of support for us be at this critical time?
Right, and I appreciate that. So, uh, two things. This is step one of a, of a one-two punch, if you will. We have pending in the legislature, a, a measure that could reform how we administer elections in California to give voters more flexibility, either to vote by mail, to vote in person, to vote close to home, or anywhere in their county, to vote on Election Day, or early voting as well. Uh, so, so we hope to see action on that after first of the year. This measure on the registration side, uh, as I mentioned, has been approved by the Assembly, approved by the Senate, and is on the desk of the governor. And so we're now about 10 days into his 30-day, uh, timeframe of either signing the bill into law or vetoing the legislation. Uh, he hasn't said he's not gonna sign it, but he hasn't signaled that he is gonna sign it. He's, I'm sure, doing his homework, doing, his due diligence. And so we're asking anybody and everybody in the state that agrees this is a good idea to weigh in. And as I mentioned, I've seen it time and again where the city of Los Angeles is speaking up, uh, in favor of an issue going a long, long way in the statewide debate.
Well, members, I, I could just say that I, I recommend that we support the secretary on this, uh, issue. I do not, uh, see any more, uh, speakers, uh, on the queue. So, Madam Clerk, why don't you open the roll on this item? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
You have our support.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations. Thank you, and good to see you again. Mitchell?
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, sir. Can we, um, move item, um, 28 forthwith, please?
In fact, I'm glad you brought that up. Madam Clerk, why don't we move all of today's items forthwith?
We have recess coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. At this point, I'd like to, uh, give the floor to Mr. Mitch O'Farrell for a very, very important, uh, presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Rue, would you please join me up here? Thank you. Thank you so much. I am glad to stand here, uh, with our colleague, Councilman David Rue, and our general manager of the Department of Disability, Stephen David Simon. I hope you're coming, Stephen. There we are. We also have the National Alliance for Mental Illness and Each Mind Matters to raise awareness and support, uh, for the people affected by mental illness and their families. If these organizations are here and could join us, please come up. Thank you. Please stand with us. Colleagues, mental health issues are an equal opportunity affliction. Regardless of race, age, religion, or economic status, mental illness impacts the lives of at least one in four adults and one in 10 children across the United States at one time or another. People living with mental illness need help, and they need hope. They need a community that supports them, their families, and their recovery. Mental illness is a highly treatable medical condition affecting the brain and requiring the same attention as treating any other, uh, illness, including cancer, heart disease, diabetes, or any other major illness. Scientific research is constantly working toward breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illness, resulting in more effective treatments to allow people to reclaim full and productive lives. I applaud the efforts by our city's Department on Disability, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, and Each Mind Matters for their tremendous work to end the stigma of mental illness and in support of mental health. I would now like to introduce our colleague, the Chair of the Health Commission, uh, I'm sorry, the Health Committee on the City Council, Mr. David Rue.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell, and thank you, Councilman Corretz, who cannot join us today. I believe he's under the weather. Today, we recognize World Mental Health Day here in Los Angeles to increase awareness of mental illness and to promote treatment and recovery. Every year, thousands of men and women with mental health conditions are deprived of their rights around the world. More than 124,000, or one-fifth of the 610,000 homeless people across the United States suffer from a severe mental illness. And that number increases to nearly one-third of the homeless population here in Los Angeles. They face various forms of discrimination and are subject to emotional and physical abuse around the region. Access to mental health services must be a top priority when addressing the homeless crisis in our city. A comprehensive plan that includes access to services can and will ultimately prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. Every homeless encampment and every homeless person on our streets serve as a reminder of this crisis. Unfortunately, there is an increased likelihood that a homeless person will face a combination of mental health and substance abuse. This year's World Mental Health theme is, World Mental Health Day theme is dignity in mental health. Let's work to ensure that people with mental health conditions can live with dignity through policy, treatment, and education. We, as a council, have the responsibility to put forth a plan that addresses all components of the mental, of the homeless crisis in our city. And it must include mental health. And you know, today, I am so happy to be joined by my former colleagues who work at the, uh, at the Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health, and also, um, uh, friends from NAMI walks, which I've had the privilege to organize a team and walk for. And, um, I'm so happy to see former friends, I mean, uh, friends, old faces and current friends. And thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell and, uh, Corretz for, uh, bringing this today.
Sure, you bet. Thank you, Mr. Rue. How about a big round of applause for our Chair of the Health Committee on the City And now I would like to introduce, uh, the General Manager on the Department of, uh, of the Department on Disability, and that is Steve David Simon.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers, Mr. President. Um, it was another president, William Jefferson Clinton, who reminded us that mental illness is nothing to be ashamed of, but stigma and bias shame us all. Now, I doubt there's anyone in the room in front of me or behind me that at some point around the water cooler at the kitchen table hasn't said, when talking about their friends or family or coworkers or boss, that they're a little bit nuts. And sometimes, that's okay. Sometimes that's true. But I gotta tell you, it's days like today that we're reminded that those kind of comments carry stigma, they carry bias, and have a tremendous impact on our communities. We're reminded of the incredible stress that so many of us are other, are under, whether constituents or city employees or elected officials. We're reminded that at some point, virtually all of us will grapple with some kind of issue of mental health, uh, on some level at some point in our lives. So the folks at NAMI and Each Mind Matters provide the support, the education, the awareness, and the advocacy to address these issues 365 days a year. The Department on Disability for the City of Los Angeles is proud to help ensure that mental illness remains one of the issues that's at the forefront of our ensuring that Los Angeles becomes and remains the most accessible big city in America. So thank you, councilmembers, for recognizing World Mental Health Day, committing to raise awareness about stigma and mental health issues. And let me, um, ask the people who really are, are doing the day-to-day work in the trenches to come up and say a few words to us. Please welcome Shelley Hoffman and Emily Wu Trong.
Thank you so much, uh, all councilmembers. Uh, I'd also like to thank the Department of Mental Health and Each Mind Matters, who are partner with us, uh, to do the work that we do, as was said, 365 days. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and we are the nation's voice and the county's voice on mental health and mental illnesses. Everybody knows someone, as was said. Everybody knows someone. And we walk to, uh, our walk is coming up on October 3rd. I invite you all to participate, to donate. I have flyers, I put one up on the bulletin board and brochures that I will have at the back of the room after, afterwards. It's October 3rd at Grand Park, right across from City Hall. It's, it's gonna be a very fun event. The theme of our walk this year is superheroes fighting stigma. And that's what people who fight stigma are, superheroes. The, uh, registration is open at eight. There's a pre-walk program. There's gonna be drumming and speakers, and then we have, um, a beautiful, uh, 5K walk. Everybody can donate, everybody can participate. We do not charge anything for registration. We do not charge anything for all the amazing programs of education, support, and advocacy. It's through the funds we raise in NAMI Walk, uh, that we can provide these things throughout the county at no cost. They're offered in English and Spanish. And two of our courses, Family to Family and NAMI Basics, are in the SAMSHA's, uh, Substance Abuse and Mental Health, um, advocacy, or you know what it is. Uh, they're in the National Registry of Evidence-Based Practices. So people who take these courses, uh, people who have relatives with mental illness and they take the course, they do better in their recovery. Uh, let's see. So you can donate online, you can send checks. Uh, these funds are used to help and outreach throughout the county. Please help us end stigma so that, uh, people can get the help they need, so they realize that there is treatment, that treatment is available like for any other illness, so that our laws support inclusion and recovery, so that wonderful, uh, change of having jail diversion actually has sites to divert people to, so that we have supportive housing and supportive employment. And then we'll see a big change in our world. Thank you so much for your support, and join us.
No, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Emily Wu Trong. I am happy to be here, especially since this month of September is still Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I am a motivational speaker and a mental health advocate, promoting Each Mind Matters because each mind truly does matter. Many people think that their lives don't matter, that their voices are not heard. Their, Mother Teresa, she once said, "The greatest disease of all is to be a nobody to anybody." I once had those feelings of suicide, but two years ago, at a legislative briefing on Asian-American mental health, I said, "I will not end my life because I have a story to share." The more we talk about mental health, the more we will alleviate the stigma. There is no shame. There is no shame. And so I tell my story wherever I go as an advocate, to say that every life matters. Each mind matters. The mental health movement is a love revolution. We are trying to, to tear down the walls of ignorance, competition, judgment, and bring about an environment, a community of love, compassion, and empathy, to say that you are precious, and I would never in a million years ever want you to end your life. So, the green ribbon is, is the ribbon that Each Mind Matters is the one distributing. And every day, when we wear these green ribbons, we can alleviate the stigma on mental health, talk about it, and, and know that there is no shame. Helplessness is not hopelessness, and with help, there truly is hope. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. That was so, so inspirational. Thank you so very much. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Dr. William Arroyo. I'm Regional Medical Director of Los Angeles County Departmental Health, and I am honored to be here, especially with my councilman by my side, uh, Mr. Rue, who, uh, I used to work with, uh, when he worked for the County of Los Angeles. Um, uh, again, uh, it's an honor. Uh, I want to share with you something about Each Mind Matters, which is a statewide campaign to bring mental health out of the closet. It is a campaign that is supported by Proposition 63 with investments from all counties through a joint powers authority. Uh, I'd like to share with you some sobering statistics regarding mental health. Fifty percent of all mental illness has the onset before the age of 14. Seventy-five percent has its onset before the age of 24. So we're not just talking about, uh, all of the folks who are homeless, uh, living a few blocks from here. We're talking about young people as well. And so, uh, with that in mind, Each Mind Matters has launched three statewide campaigns: a student mental health initiative, a suicide prevention initiative, and a stigma and discrimination reduction initiative. With students, we have supported them in developing public service announcements, uh, 32nd announcements, and the first statewide winner of this effort two years ago was a Los Angeles resident. Uh, so I'm very proud of that. Uh, we have had subsequent winners from the Los Angeles area, uh, this year as well. Through this campaign, we have been able to raise public awareness, uh, to the tune of more than 1.5 million folks this year who indicate that they are more willing to socialize with, live next door to, or work with people who have mental health challenges. Uh, that's a big change from just a few years ago. Approximately 600,000 additional Californians have indicated through a survey that they have provided emotional support to someone with a mental health challenge as a result of our campaign. However, my enthusiasm for this campaign is so, is sobering by the fact that nine in 10 Californians living with psychological distress report experiencing discrimination in the past year. More than two-thirds of those polled said that they definitely or probably would hide a mental health problem from coworkers or classmates. We need to- We need to bring this to an end, and we're hoping the council will help us with that. And finally, I want to share with you that the counties, Los Angeles as well as all the other counties, have made great on return of an investment. And as frankly a county bureaucrat, we're always looking to get money back. And so to that end, in a study conducted collaboratively with Rand Corporation, it was found that for every dollar that counties invest in this suicide prevention program, the people of California will receive an estimated $1,100 in economic benefits such as reduced spending on emergency care and increased earnings. And county governments will gain $50 for each dollar invested through this suicide prevention effort by averting Medicare health care costs and increased state income tax revenue. So with that, I welcome joining the city council in partnering for more Mental Health Matters Campaign. Thank you very much.
Folks, you heard it at this podium. What we need is a love revolution. I'm ready for a love revolution. Are you all ready for a love revolution? Because I am. All right, that's the theme of the day, a love revolution. All right, so speaking of love, Mr. Rue and I are going to hand certificates out to Each Mind Matters. Each Mind Matters, please step forward.
Wonderful.
There you go.
Wonderful.
And we'll pose for pictures later. So there's that one. And then we're going to hand a certificate to NAMI Walks LA County. Is everyone going to walk?
Yeah.
And you heard the donation website, right? Log on and donate.
Thank you so much.
No one, that's okay. Yeah, we're going back for pictures. And then for the general delegation today, World Mental Health Day, may God bless all of you for participating and for all that you do. Thank you so much.
Now, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. David Rue, and thank you, Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. Thank you. Harris-Dawson, are you going to do this one? I appreciate that very much. Now I'd like to defer to Mr. Harris-Dawson, who's pinch hitting for me on a very important presentation, and I really appreciate it, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. We're being joined by a host of community leaders.
Oh, Mr. Sedillo, can you wait?
Just a super forthwith.
Yeah, everything's going, we'll deal with that. Mr. Harris-Dawson is back.
Excellent. So in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, we'd like to recommend, recognize a leader in the Hispanic and Latino community, Mr. Mario Hernandez. His work in both Latin America and here in the United States is work that should be applauded. I want to present Mr. Mario Hernandez on behalf of the Council President and the members of the LA City Council. Commendation is here. Here we go. It's giant.
Right, all right.
Mr. Hernandez is the Director of Public Affairs at Western Union, a global leader in payment services with a combined network of approximately 510,000 agent locations in 200 countries and territories. Mr. Hernandez is responsible for the development and implementation of public strategies to reach Western Union's various constituents' sees here in the United States and in Latin America and beyond. He plays an instrumental role in helping lead out in Western Union's philanthropic and corporate social responsibility initiatives here in the United States and in Latin America and our neighbors to the south. So thank you so much, and thank you to all the leaders that have joined us for this great celebration today.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Dear Council President, Mr. Herr Wesson, dear Council Member Gil Sedillo, dear council members, I want to thank you for the honor of being the recipient of this resolution. This is very important for me especially to receive it from Los Angeles, where we have long been established. I want to thank my dear friend, the Council General of Mexico, Carlos Ada, and the Council for Special Projects, Mario Perez Ramirez, for his presence today. I also want to thank my friends in the Mexican and Central American communities that had joined me this morning to share this recognition. I also want to acknowledge the presence of Linda Lopez, Head of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, and to congratulate Mayor Eric Garcetti for his leadership in the City of Los Angeles. I want to thank again Council President Wesson and his staff, as well as Council Member Sedillo's staff. I also would like to express my gratitude to Mr. Francisco Rivera, President of the National Central American Round Table, for this resolution in the context of celebrating the 35th anniversary of the arrival of the Central American diaspora to the City of Los Angeles. Finally, I dedicate this recognition to the immigrant families from across the Latin American region and the Caribbean that my company, Western Union, proudly serves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Thank you so very much. Air of Little Business, while we're waiting for Mr. O'Farrell to return. Let's do item 30, Ms. Peirman. Donna Peirman, item 30. Peirman, she passes on item 30. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have more than 12 members present. Why don't we vote for reconsideration on the ordinances, and then we will vote them through. So this, you want to identify the oaths?
Yes, those are items 2 and 18 through 24.
Okay, let's vote. This vote is for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and like I said, all items would be forthwith. Mr. Sedillo, you made a request.
Yes, item 20.
Item 20?
Correct.
So item 20, in order to do a super forthwith, Mr. City Attorney, we have to vote on that, correct? So for super forthwith on item 20, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Urgent forthwith. Thank you. We're going to go to item 26. I have two cards on item 26. And then, Mr. O'Farrell, we're going to go to you. But I want to call up Mr. Walsh and Ms. Peirman on item 26. Item 26.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns income from the Community Redevelopment Agency projects transferred to the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment. They said that we would never be able to destroy the CRA. It was impossible. It's gone. All its money is being redistributed, redistributed. As of today, and this is part of this money up here, $6,300,000,000 that would have gone to state CRAs, has gone to the cities, counties, education, colleges. Thanks to us, thanks to the people you call mentally ill, thanks to the people who cause a lot of trouble at meetings, we got rid of the CRA.
Ms. Peirman?
The CRA is dead. Long live the new... Anyway, I'm hoping that what we do with the transfer, I'm hoping that it will be used for something that belongs to the taxpayers, because after all, CRA made it difficult for anyone to have, it stole money from us basically. So basically, what I think we should do is bring it back. Bring it back to the people who pay taxes, property taxes and sales tax. So let's stop the city council from giving it to their projects, and let's bring it back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, item 38. Mr. Walsh, item 38.
This is item 38. Transfer of funds within the sidewalk and curb repair fund, available to sidewalk repair to make a technical adjustment to reflect the intent of the budget. This is a reduction in sidewalk and curb repair of almost $5 million. Anybody in Switzerland, you want to make the Olympics here? You'll fall and break your ass on the sidewalks. The worst sidewalks in America are here in Los Angeles. Everything doesn't work in Los Angeles. Everything is cracked in Los Angeles. The sidewalks are a joke in Los Angeles. You find people rolling in agony from tripping in Hollywood, all over the city. And it's just not that the sidewalks are in disrepair. Even your metal detection system downstairs hasn't been working for two years, for two months. Come to Hollywood, come to LA, but when you come, wear kneepads and wear a helmet, because we have the absolute worst sidewalks in America. But where's our mayor? He's with his gay lover hanging out. HollywoodHighlands.org.
And don't go far, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. One more, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Walsh, item 29. Ms. Peirman, item 29. Let's go.
Let's go. What are you in a big hurry for?
Just come on, Mr. Walsh. Stay on the subject.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns 29 redevelopment of the family housing headquarters and campus. This is for people with very large backsides to hang out at the headquarters. Remember, anything that involves the headquarters and hanging out and bureaucracy is more important than the streets. It's more important than anything else that's up here. We're not interested in family housing. Let's build another building for family housing. All you want to do is increase government as the sidewalks and the city fall apart. Well, it's only $1 million. To, what are you going to put in there? Gold? Gold fixtures in the plumbing? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Ms. Peirman.
Are you serious? A $1,900,000 home loan? And people are losing their homes all over the place, and you're giving a $1,900,000 home loan for this Langcontron Boulevard project? It shows you that the city council doesn't care for the original person. They'd rather give a $1,900,000 home loan. So before you be just running off and giving these $1 million home loans, I really wish that there was a way that you can tell us exactly why this person, why this company or whatever they are on Langcontron or Apartments, usually it's Apartments, why they need a $1 million home loan, but you still won't open video conferencing. That's not right.
You're off the subject. Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. O'Farrell.
President. Good morning, colleagues. Welcome to this year's Deaf Awareness Month celebration. Seventeen years ago, the mayor and city council realized that there was a unique and thriving community in our city that had not received the attention or recognition that we have equally offered other groups. That is why the city officially designated September as Deaf Awareness Month in the City of Los Angeles. In honor of this month-long celebration, we would like to recognize exemplary individuals and organizations who have contributed to the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. We welcome all of our honorees to City Hall this morning and congratulate you, all of you, for your contributions to our great city. This honorees include, from Council District 2, Paul Krikorian's honoree Cynthia Lemus Ramos. Ms. Ramos. Big round of applause for Ms. Ramos. Matthew Delacorte from Council Member Bob Blumenfield's office. And, oh, Mr. Rue, would you like to introduce your honoree?
Beethoven's Nightmare from Council District 4.
And from Mr. Felipe Fuentes' office, The Easter Seals.
All right, wave.
And from Marquis Harris-Dawson's office, Marlton School for the Deaf. And from Council District 11, Mike Bonner's office, Joshua Wagner. And from Council District 14, Jose Uizar, Stephanie Velazquez, Jocelyn Smith, and Shaheem And my honoree, who will also serve as this year's Deaf Festival emcee, actor and filmmaker, Dicky Hartz. And I understand we have a certificate for him? There we are. I just had the great pleasure of just now meeting Dicky Hartz, so welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now I would like to invite our emcee for this year's festival, Dicky Hartz, up to the microphone.
I want to take just a moment to say thank you so much for this amazing and unbelievable honor. I am more... I am more than happy to accept this on behalf of Deaf Festival. This is really the perfect time for this because this is Deaf Awareness Month, and today is a really hot time in the deaf community. We have a lot more people visible on television shows and movies. We have deaf contestants on America's Next Top Model. We have ABC family TV show Switched at Birth, which includes some deaf actors. We have New York Broadway Spring Awakenings with deaf actors involved there as well. And there are many more projects and many more web series that are soon to be disseminated. And so, this is a really wonderful time for the deaf community. And I'd like to ask you to take advantage of hashtag... I'm sorry, hashtag Deaf Talent for yourself. We are really, really proud to be here. The more visibility deaf people have, the more our accessibility will improve, the more job opportunities that will become available for deaf people as well. And so, I'm really proud to represent the deaf community as well as the LGBTQ community and also people of color. So, come to our show on Saturday, October 3rd. You will really enjoy it. You're going to have a wonderful time. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I have another honoree to name from Paul Coret's office, Council District 5, Patrick W. Siemens. Patrick. Here we are. Thank you. And thank you, Dicky Hartz. How about a big round of applause for our emcee, Mr. Dicky Hartz? And now, once again, the Chair of the Health Committee on the Los Angeles City Council, our colleague David Rue.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your leadership once again, Council Member Mitchell Farrell. And congratulations, Dicky Hartz. It is very important that we recognize all those in our community. And it is very important about diversity, to make sure that all members of our community is represented in all walks of life. So, I am very pleased to join in the celebration, in the celebration, right? And thank you so very much.
You bet. You bet. Thank you. The celebration of Deaf Awareness Month will culminate, as Mr. Hartz mentioned, next Saturday, October 3rd, at the 17th Annual Deaf Festival Los Angeles Celebration, right here at Grand Park. Deaf Festival Los Angeles is the largest festival in the entire United States honoring this community. Deaf Festival gives deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals of all ages a venue to engage and network with their peers and helps more than 400,000 individuals who make up the deaf community in Los Angeles County to discover their God-given potential. This festival also helps educate those of us in the hearing community, which showcases and celebrates the inspirational stories of the deaf and hard-of-hearing. To further highlight this talented community, a T-shirt design contest was held. We might have... Oh, there we go. We have a picture of it on the screen. Please give a round of applause to this year's winning artist, Omar Guzman, with his themed design depicting growth. Very lovely. Thank you. This festival has many supporters, and I'd like to acknowledge the unwavering dedication of the following contributors: The Department on Disability, Department of Cultural Affairs, Los Angeles County Supervisor Hilda Solis, Bertha Velasquez, Richard Ray of the Department of Disability, the Deaf Festival Committee, and all of you, my council colleagues. Now, once again, General Manager of the Department of Disability, Stephen David Simon, will say a few words.
Good morning. Of course, Council Members Rue and O'Farrell and Dicky Hartz have stolen all my best lines. So, I'll just make one brief point. I'll get back on my soapbox and say again, please, please, ensure that we're always making everything we do accessible for all Angelenos, and that certainly includes the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Make sure that every video you put on your website that you participate in is captioned. Make sure you contact us for an interpreter for any cultural event that you participate in, for whatever the target audience is, because the deaf and hard-of-hearing community spans and reaches every single other community across Los Angeles. And if you don't believe me, please join us for Deaf Festival on October 3rd. It is truly an extraordinary event. It takes place right after the NAMI Walk we talked about here at City Hall and in Grand Park. It's one of our richest and most vibrant events. The Department on Disability is proud to host such a community-driven and community-led event.
We're going to move on to item 11, called Special by Mr. Kukorian.
And again, thank you for recognizing Deaf Awareness Month and all the deaf and hard-of-hearing community leaders that are in our midst. Thank you again.
Thank you, Stephen. And thank all of you honorees, colleagues, for making this another successful Deaf Awareness
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Month of September. We will see you all October 3rd at Grand Park.
Members, as you know, we're engaged in a building boom in Los Angeles right now, and
Thank you.
in many neighborhoods, that has meant the decimation of the urban canopy of trees as building larger homes, particularly in neighborhoods and, well, neighborhoods throughout our city. When developers are expanding homes or bulldozing existing homes and building McMansions, very often, increased size of the driveway has led to cutting down existing mature trees that provide benefit not just for that home, but for the entire neighborhood. So, Mr. Buscaino in the Public Works Committee and myself in the Budget and Finance Committee are working right now very hard in developing a comprehensive sidewalk repair policy for our city, which inevitably will lead to the loss of many trees. What we should not be doing now is compounding that loss by allowing developers to cut down mature existing trees simply to expand a driveway. And so, this motion is asking for as many options as we can to prevent that from happening, including increased penalties for unpermitted removal of trees and looking at ways to change the building plans, including reversing the plan to move the driveway in circumstances when that would be feasible in order to save the mature tree. It also would call for increasing the replacement ratio so that developer would be required to provide a 15-gallon tree, at least seven feet tall, one tree per diameter inch of the tree that's removed. So, it's an important step forward in preserving our urban canopy. I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. There are no more speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Thank you. Let's move on to item 33, called Special for Cards. First speaker is Dan for item 33.
One minute only, please. Item number 33. Could City Council please tell the public just how many of these reward motions have been actually paid out? What City Council doesn't tell poor Angelenos is how dangerous it is to come forward on crimes. What the LAP doesn't tell the public is that this money is taxable, so a $50,000 reward... By the way, this is only one minute, please. A $50,000 reward is only going to be $30,000. It is taxable income, which is barely enough to get your family out of Dodge. They don't work. It is dangerous. And if you are an Angeleno who is not here legally, and if you do not have a tax ID, you're not getting the money. The LAPD wants your information, and they do not tell you that. City Council doesn't tell you that. These motions fail. One minute.
Thank you. Next speaker, Donna Pearlman. Item 33, Donna.
Name is Pearman. Anyway, so, basically, you know, we wouldn't have all these shootings if people wouldn't die so much, if people, Second Amendment rights were more... If they didn't take away the Second Amendment rights, if people had the right to carry, people would think twice about shooting somebody if they thought that they were going to be shot also. So, you know, long live the Second Amendment rights. It's what made our country great. So, anyway, I don't... As you said on that, I don't believe that the... Yeah. I don't think giving out these awards will do it, because I don't think anybody will give it to them, because what's the use of paying reward if you get killed for it? And I'm just going to give it one minute on that. Five, four, three, two. Will we open up a video conferencing? Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. There are no more cards on item 33. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, item passes. Let's... Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 39, Special for Cards. First speaker is Dan, item 39.
And also, Madam President, Councilmember Bonin called this item special as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we've been hearing a lot of news this morning, announcements that many of us have been making about initiatives to address homelessness. On our agenda today with this item is an item to extend the Emergency Winter Shelter Program here in Los Angeles. Every year, the winter program, the Emergency Winter Shelter Program runs generally from November 1st until the end of February. With El Nino coming this year and the prediction of horrible and inclement weather, we want to take steps to make sure that that program starts early and ends later. So, this motion is directing or asking LASSA to start the program early, no later than November 1st, and keep it open until the end of the rainy season. I would like to make one small amendment to the motion. The motion says, request LASSA to launch the winter shelter program no later than November 1 and keep the program running through the end of the El Nino storm season. I would like to add, and keep the shelters open 24/7 during wet weather.
Without objection?
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonin. Dan, item 39.
One minute only, please. It's a very good idea for Mr. Bonin to try to arrange this, but it is also a hypocritical idea. I'm going to quote a City Hall staffer regarding the homeless, who is presently working in this building. Quote, "If these folks won't leave, we should get someone to come around with a semi, load the homeless scum into it like stinking sardines, and drive them out to the Mojave, dump them there in the dead of night, blindfolded, and drive away." Period. End of story. That quote is from your colleague, Jim Bickhart. And that's why protecting the homeless in Venice... By the way, this took place in Venice. It's hypocritical to protect the homeless from the weather and give a contract to Jim Bickhart, who wrote this from a city computer when he worked for Mayor Vierigosa. It is hypocritical to do that. Good idea. It's hypocritical. One minute.
Next speaker, Byron Barajas, item 39.
At a website called heavy.com, there's an article called, "When Does El Nino 2015 Start?" Now, according to AccuWeather, the storm will begin somewhere in late September. Now, September, October, November. Well, what about October? My... In saying this is just for your reference to consider, that I declared that you begin the shelters, according to this website, and you could probably find out in other sources on your own, El Nino starts soon, and your program starts later. Now, if this is because of your funding, you having funding issues that, you know, you have to start in November, then maybe you should consider what the hell, how to get these funds. So, I think the other point, and last, is that these poor people, whether you like it or not, they deserve every bit of help they can get.
Thank you. There are no more cards on item 39. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 15. Madam Clerk, called Special by Mr. Sadio.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the CAO report that's been circulated.
Mr. Wezar? Item 15.
Did you speak already?
No, you're on the queue, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President. And I want to thank Mr. Bonin and other committee members who have been working diligently to make this possible. You know, and the one point that I wanted to raise was that this is not only, when we think about creating more shelters during the rainy season, et cetera, and opening up emergency places, we should also consider that this is not only a skid roll issue, but it affects all our city. So, as we think about this and move forward, let's think about how we provide shelters throughout the city. In northeast Los Angeles, have a group of concerned residents that want to house people locally. I think the nimbyism of the past is slowly fading away when we recognize that our fellow human beings can be housed nearby us and not impact local communities. So, we should look at this as a regional issue. And I just think that we're going to create more of this in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio?
That I agree with, but it's not on point. We're on item 15.
Correct.
And we're simply asking for the adoption of the CAO report. This has to do specifically with our efforts to use bonds to develop affordable housing.
So, that's been circulated. We have two votes before us, colleagues. One on substitution and the second one on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, let's take up the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 43.
It's item 43, called Special for Cards.
First speaker is Dan, item 43.
One minute only, please. So, again, how many of these rewards have been actually paid out? Virtually none of them. And they are misleading the public. The City Council and the LAPD does not tell people who are here illegally, who don't have a tax ID, that if you don't have a tax ID, you don't get the money. They want your information, but they're not going to pay you the money if you don't have a tax ID. Furthermore, the City Council and the LAPD is not honest with the public. This income is taxable. A $50,000 reward is only going to pay out about $30,000, and that's barely enough to get your family out of Dodge. Snitches get stitches. The city of Los Angeles does not have your best interest. I feel badly for these people, but the City Council and the LAPD are silent. They do not tell you the truth. One minute only.
Next speaker, Mr. John Walsh on item 43. Let's open the row. Close the row. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now let's take up the item. Let's open the row. Close the row. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Item passes. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 43.
It's item 43. Call special for Cards.
First speaker is Dan. Item 43.
One minute only, please. So again, how many of these rewards have been actually paid out? Virtually none of them. And they are misleading the public. The City Council and the LAPD does not tell people who are here illegally, who don't have a tax ID, that if you don't have a tax ID, you don't get the money. They want your information, but they're not going to pay you the money if you don't have a tax ID. Furthermore, the City Council and the LAPD is not honest with the public. This income is taxable. A $50,000 reward is only going to pay out about $30,000, and that's barely enough to get your family out of Dodge. Snitches get stitches. The city of Los Angeles does not have your best interest. I feel badly for these people, but the City Council and the LAPD are silent. They do not tell you the truth. One minute only.
Next speaker, Mr. John Walsh on item 43.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, you might as well make this reward, instead of $50,000, $5 million. No one's going to try to collect it. You've seen, this is for Laurie Anderson, who was killed, was murdered almost three years ago. Everybody knows. We have a gang truce in the city of Los Angeles, but some of the subsets are fighting among one another. It's not 100%. And that's why we're getting this increase in murder. Increase in murder means the gangs are fighting among one another. And often, they kill somebody in the car who was not a member of the gang. This is $50,000. Snitches get stitches. See the shirt with the bloody straight razor? If you want to slit your throat, give information on who shot Laurie Anderson. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. There are no more cards on item 43. Madam Clerk, open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Item passes. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 1.
Item 1. Call special for Cards.
Gregory Thompson for item 1S. Are you here, sir?
And Madam President, for item 1S, there's requests to continue that item till October 6.
There's been a request to continue your item till October 6. Do you still wish to speak? I don't understand what you're saying. You're gonna, okay, so you're going to speak? You don't need to speak. Okay, just know that your item's been continued to October 6. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Stacy Lawson. Stacy Lawson, are you here?
And as she's coming, Madam President, there's also been a request to continue items 1F and 1R to October 6 as well.
Madam, my card was placed for item 35.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your card says item 1. So, okay.
Can you change that to 35, please?
Sure. Sorry about that. Thank you. Next speaker, John Raceman on item 1R. Are you here? It's not here, but let the record show that this item's been continued. Are you here, sir? Are you John Raceman? You're not? Okay. This item's been continued. 1R's been continued to October 6. There's a second card for John Raceman as well. His item on item 1F has also been continued until October 6. Next speaker, Bruce Safar. You're speaking on item 1D, sir?
1D.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson, City Council. I'm here speaking on the assessment on item 1D, the plumber property. My wife and I are protesting any assessment against us personally. We filed a written protest over 10 days ago. Basically, we were co-owners of that property along with Mr. LaVario. Mr. LaVario ousted us from the property back in April of 2014. We filed a lawsuit for partition in Superior Court, Los Angeles Superior Court, on that property in July of 2014, and the violations occurred July 31 while we were ousted from the property. We had no way of taking care of or remedying the violations, because we weren't allowed on the property by our co-owner. During the lawsuit, we received a judgment for partition. The property was sold, and we had also requested a contempt, which was granted us by the court. The judgment ordered the co-owner to fix the violations, which he did not do. And we couldn't do that. And as a result, that contempt motion was granted, and the co-owner was found in contempt. So I'm here to request, now the property has been sold. We no longer own the property. We don't, the issue is not lean on that property, because the present owners don't own the property anymore. The issue is that I don't want to have myself and my wife have any judgments or any collections against us as a result of this violation, and I request the City Council order that, that we be held harmless from any judgments or attempts to collect because of the court orders.
Thank you, sir. I've just been notified your item's been continued for two weeks.
Pardon?
Your item has been continued for two weeks.
Okay, what date?
October 6.
October 6, sir.
10 o'clock here?
Yes, and the council staff is, if you see the young woman in the white, you can speak to her, but your item's been continued for two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, Joseph Uvarlik. I hope I have that correctly. 1H. Your item has been received and filed. Did you know that?
Say it again.
Your item's been received and filed on this lien, but you can go ahead and speak. Just letting you know, this is 1H.
I just want to say that I was talking to these city officials on the telephone, and I told them this was, this fine was paid already in front of big city officials, building and safety officials in a round table for many years ago. And I told him to, please tell them to look at your file. You will find it. So probably that's why he called me back, that I don't have to come here, but I will receive some letter, some proof that I don't have to come here, but I never received any letters. So that's why I'm coming here, so.
Well, your item's been resolved. It's been resolved.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to have.
You can go ahead.
Sent, but it's never been sent to me, this proof.
But your item's been resolved, and so there's a young woman here that can speak to you further on your matter? Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Our next speaker is Kristen Carlson, 1N.
Hello. I was here a month ago on this same item, because no one will talk to me about these totally erroneous charges. So last time, I spoke to Diana from Jose Weezer's office, and she said that the LADWS would get in touch with me. He called me like the day before the next hearing. I explained the situation to him. He said that he would look into his records. She postponed the following continuation, and he still has not gotten back to me, still won't return my phone calls. And so I'm back here again. I thought it was getting continued again. I actually have pneumonia currently, but I'm here because no one will talk to me, because for some reason, we have charges for an inspection for a business that never existed at a property that we own, that apparently the Building Department thinks existed there at the same time as our tenant, who was actually paying their annual inspection fees. So these two annual inspection fees that were charged to this business that doesn't exist, when that business that doesn't exist didn't pay those annual inspection fees, we got charged fines. Those fines are now approximately $5,000 or so. And I'd like to know why no one will talk to us about this, and I keep having to show up here even when I am ill. I was in the hospital on Sunday, and don't know why this isn't getting resolved, but it's exceptionally frustrating.
Ma'am, Charles is the gentleman right here. He, he's the person that you need to speak to, so I'm going to go ahead and...
Right, but he's the person to speak to if I'm going to pay something, and I'm not going to pay something.
Ma'am, all I can do is place your item on the desk until you talk to staff. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shelley Leaf, item 1J.
Good morning. My name is Shelley, and I'm talking in behalf of Jean Park in regards to 855 West Florence Avenue. There was an annual inspection fee of $526.42, and she is the owner of the building, but she was wondering if the owner of the building has to pay the fee, or if the owner of the business has to pay for the fee, because she had moved to Seattle and sold the business in the year of 2008, July. And even though the amount is $546, when we called, they said that the amount is now over $3,000. So the mail has been going to the wrong address all this time, so she just recently found out. So she was wondering, in this case, what she should do.
Ma'am, I'm going to put, I'm going to place your item on the desk, and you see the gentleman in the gray suit? He's going to speak to you at the rows.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker is Anthony LaVario on item 1D. Anthony LaVario? I don't see that person, but this item's been continued for two weeks until October 6. Next speaker, Mr. Walsh. Oh, Mr. Walsh, I apologize, you're out of time, sir. Next speaker, Donna Pearman.
It shows when that speaker spoke. It keeps on going up and going up, so that the people can't possibly pay these things off. I'm glad that you gave more time to that person than V, because that was really ridiculous, spending, I don't know how this person got all the way up to $22,141.33. So something's got to be done, because these, I really don't think that these liens are for anything probably that really should be. I mean, large corporations do things with really, you know, they really pollute, and they really do large transgressions, but they're forgiven. And, but you go on to these small, poor homeowners and people, you know, apartments, and just stick it to them until they can't afford it. So I hope you forgive them all. That's what you should do. Thank you.
Next speaker, Eric Previn on item 1.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn. And in the absence of the proper leadership on this, could somebody ask Mr. Angole in the Building Department to provide some kind of a task force to examine what can only be described as a litany of bungles by somebody? Either that, or we have to identify the consultant or executive in the Building Department who suggested that we go into old files, pull out liens that somebody's lost track of, and just take another pass at tormenting the taxpaying public, and some of whom may have violated the, but most of these liens that come before this hallowed body on our most glorious day of meeting are old, dusty, stinky, 300% penalty kind of things that don't apply. You've heard, just in the last couple of days, Councilmember Martinez, I know you're a leader in this area, we've heard, I think, a half dozen cogent residents of our districts from across the city come down and in multiple languages explain that something is desperately wrong. So I don't know. Does anybody, is there an incuriosity about how this could be happening? I mean, I personally find it offensive, and I'm not one of the residents who's being tagged. Now, in my district, to be fair, there are a number, many of them get continued quickly. CVS, who we do cherish, we have three CVSs in one short block, had a lien, but they didn't come down and pay. They just, I don't know where they are. So I don't get it. Is there some leader here who wants to take the role of saying, hey, maybe we could freshen up our meeting a bit by moving some of these liens to committee? Or getting some of these liens, I mean, who is doing the checking on whether or not we want to go after people for old, dead things? How many, how many stories can we tolerate without rolling our collective eyes in astonishment? I mean, this is our great city. We want you guys to upgrade and be good, and you are. But this is bad. This is very, very bad. So thank you.
Thank you. There's been a request, Madam Clerk, to continue item 1N for four weeks until October 20th, and 1J for 30 days until October 23rd. Let's vote on the remaining items. Open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, let's move on to item 32.
Item 32. Call special for Cards.
Dan, item 32.
Item 32. It's a terrific idea, provided that the city of Los Angeles institutes criminal penalties for lying about your income to get the low-income internet service. I'm going to give you an example. There is a city executive who earns in excess of $218,000, who has been getting a low-income discount from the LADWP. Her name is Brenda Barnett. Ron Galperin knows she's been getting a low-income discount, so where is that being audited? Where is the criminal penalty for lying about your income? I am talking about lying about your income. If you want a low-income discount, you should have a criminal penalty for those who lie about it. I am giving examples of it. Another example, are you going to interrupt my time, or do I speak, or do I get my time held? I'm giving examples of a city executive who lied about her income to get not one, but two low-income discounts.
Madam President, he is not talking about this legislation.
Yes, I am, I will get back to it. You need criminal penalties for anybody, you know, you know what? Fuck it then. Don't give low-income discounts, because you, anybody can get a low-income discount. There are people who were employed by the city who lied to the LADWP. They used that low-income discount to get a low-income discount from LA Animal Services. You can have hundreds of thousands of dollars of income and lie about it, and, and so there's no point in doing this. It's a great idea for Mr. Wesson, but without criminal penalties for lying about your income, it's completely irrelevant. And Brenda Barnett makes $218,000 and got a low-income discount from the DWP and LA Animal Services. No criminal penalties? It's a stupid idea. Thank you.
Next speaker, Agustin Ergiles on item 32.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Agustin Ergiles. I am with the California Emerging Technology Fund. We have been working to close the digital divide across California for nearly a decade. And as we like to say, Los Angeles is definitely ground zero for closing the digital divide. So we are very happy to support this motion, as we feel that the current proceedings at the FCC to update the Lifeline program so that it includes broadband will give us the opportunity to connect those nearly a million and a half residents in Los Angeles who do not have internet access at home. So we're very pleased to have this kind of support for the motion and for the recommendations for our Internet For All Now campaign, because based on our experience, we're making the recommendations to the FCC of what it takes to get people connected, to make sure that they have access, that they actually are able to adopt, they're digitally literate, and that organizations have funding to do the training needing to get those, those folks online. So thank you very much for your support, and I also brought some of our fans for you guys to, to support our iFan campaign, so hopefully I can get these to you and we can get some pictures afterwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Chris Arzate.
Good morning. My name is Chris Arzate, and over my career, I've had the opportunity to administer a number of digital inclusion and digital literacy programs throughout California in urban and rural communities. I share that because when you train someone or connect their home to the internet, you see a really big impact in their ability for their children to access resources, to do their homework, for the adults to search for jobs, for seniors to connect with their relatives and share photos of them when they were young, when they were young, or for just your regular resident to be able to see a City Council hearing such as this. Simply put, with your yes vote in this resolution, you make a declaration to the FCC to enable millions of low-income families across the country to afford broadband access and possess the power of the internet to be able to, to do all the things I mentioned just before. So I urge you for your support to support the leadership of Council President Wesson, Councilmember Blumenfield and Harris Dawson's resolution, in support of the California Emerging Technology Fund policy recommendations defined in the Internet for All Now campaign, and empower low-income, elderly, and disabled residents in Los Angeles and across the country. Thank you.
Next speaker, Norma Fernandez.
Good morning, my name is Norma Fernandez, and I am Regional Manager in Los Angeles for Everyone On. We're here today because we want to express our support for the Internet for All campaign. Everyone On is a national nonprofit, and we're dedicated to eliminating the digital divide. Our mission is to ensure that everybody has access, and so we have a huge ambitions, ambitious goal to reach as many households as possible, not only in the United States, but specifically in Los Angeles, which is why I'm here today. I ask for your yes vote in support of the California Emerging Technology Fund policy recommendations defined in the Internet for All campaign. Your support will help enhance the existing Lifeline program by including an affordable broadband component. As a national nonprofit that works on this issue on a daily basis, this is about equity for us, and we feel strongly that a broadband component will facilitate equitable access to the internet. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, Diana Rodriguez.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am Diana Rodriguez, Director of Digital Literacy and Technology, and a representative of the Los Angeles County Regional Broadband Consortium. At YPI, we serve 100,000 youth and adults each year, and we're based here in Los Angeles. I'm here today to ask you for your yes vote for Council President Wesson and Councilmembers Blumenfield and Harris Dawson's resolution in support of the California Emerging Technology Fund's policy recommendations defined in the Internet for All campaign. For the past five years, I've led the digital inclusion efforts of both the groups I mentioned, and have designed programming and worked directly with the low-income and disadvantaged populations who would benefit most from the FCC's, the reform of the Lifeline program. Your support of the California Emerging Technologies IFAN campaign will make affordable broadband access for low-income families a reality through an enhancement of the existing Lifeline program. Thank you so much for your time and support. I think we actually also want to get a photo, if, if some of you have these very beautiful fans here in front of you, if anybody can please hold them up for a photo back here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. John Walsh. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I keep saying that, you're out of time. Brian Barajas.
I think it's been said already. I just hope that the individuals who use the internet use it as they say responsibly.
And Madam President, for the record, a substitute resolution for item 32 has been circulated.
Okay, the substitute motion has been circulated. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam President. This is a friendly substitute motion that commends the California Emerging Technology Fund as statewide champions for the broadband Lifeline program and the hashtag Internet for All campaign. So we ask for everyone's support for this, and for everybody to take a picture and put it on the internet today of the, with your Internet for All fan and the hashtag.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. The subsequent motion has been circulated, we're gonna take two votes on whether to substitute. Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now we're voting on the item. Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, item passes, thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to public comment. First speaker is Jose Rodriguez. Jose Rodriguez, are you here? Necesita traducción, un momentito, we need a translator, please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Jose Rodriguez.
Good morning, my name is Jose Rodriguez.
Por 22 años he trabajado en la bodega de Bob Curry.
I've worked, I've worked at Bob Curry's warehouse for the last 22 years in Long Beach.
El 19 de marzo de 1993.
From March 19, March 19, 1993.
Empecé ganando nueve dólares por hora.
I started earning nine dollars an hour.
Han pasado más de 22 años.
And over 22 years have passed.
Y he recibido un incremento de dos dólares con 40 centavos.
And I've only received an increase or a raise of $2.40 throughout those 22 years.
Mi sueldo actual es de 11 dólares 40 centavos.
My current wage, I earn $11.40.
El día de hoy, mis compañeros y yo decidimos salir a huelga.
Currently, my coworkers and I decided to go on strike.
Porque la compañía de Bob Curry no está cumpliendo.
Because Bob Curry Company is not abiding.
No están cumpliendo con la ordenanza de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Is not abiding by the ordinance, the City of Los Angeles' ordinance.
De salarios, de sueldos dignos.
Of the salaries. Of fair salaries.
Y estamos pidiendo que la compañía sea investigada.
And we are asking for an investigation for this company.
Thank you very much. Gracias. Next speaker, Khalid Haidarnia.
Hello, my name is Khalid Haidarnia, I'm an architect, I've been here for 37 years, and I just recently entered to a contract, please pay attention. And I'm a victim of bribery by ex-City Attorney Carmen, and also Fiero, who's trying to avoid somebody, a car dealer who bribed Carmen, and entered a contract, and Mr. Fiero's backed up, and the person, as a result, he breached his contract and he destroyed my house and I became homeless. And also the District Seven right now, which is in my, you know, they're not helping me, and also District, this is regarding a person called Onik Mehrabian, the ex-owner of the Kia of Glendale, who keeps bribing the city attorneys and, you know, please have my dish to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, your time's up, thank you. Next speaker is Dan.
Okay, please do not bribe.
Sir, thank you.
Good afternoon, my new article on CityWatch LA for viewers on Channel 35, it's called "Exposed: What LA's Animal Shelter Audit Failed to Tell You." The council members have a copy, and it shows with proof that Controller Ron Galperin knew that the City of Los Angeles falsified 8,807 pet adoptions, and Ron Galperin knew it, and he did not include it in his audit. In my article on CityWatch, "Exposed: LA's Animal Shelter Audit What It Failed to Tell You," we show that Ron Galperin knew that false impound numbers are being generated at LA Animal Services. So the question is, who do you go to when the city controller doesn't tell you the whole truth about his audits? More on this to come, because certain city council members knew the truth also, and I will write about it on CityWatch before too long.
Thank you. Next speaker, Abigail Harrell.
Good afternoon, City Councilmen, thank you very much. I am from 1736 Family Crisis Center, and I wanted to thank all of the city council members for their support for over 43 years of the services that we provide. We are especially proud to announce the soon-to-be opening of our new.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, can you hold our time, Sarge? Can you please help me quiet down council chambers? It is way too loud, I can barely even hear the speaker, I apologize, ma'am.
That's okay.
Can we please lower our voices? Can you, can you help me on my, on my left? Can you please take your conversation to the back? Thank you. So sorry, ma'am. Go ahead.
No problem, thank you, Speaker. I wanted to thank especially Councilmember Bonin for his support of 1736 New Youth Shelter that will be opening up in his district. We are underway with our renovations and hope to be opening early in 2016. We also have several confidentially located shelters for victims of domestic violence and their children's in Councilmember Buscayeno's district, in President Wesson's district, and in Councilmember Curran's district. So thank you very much. And we really, we also express our thankfulness for the support of our Veterans Program located in Wilmington. We have three service centers that, that offer victims of domestic violence counseling, and we really appreciate the council.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I apologize for having to cut you off earlier. Our next speaker is Gerald Thompson. Gerald Thompson, are you here? Gerald Thompson is not in the room. Next speaker, John Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, historic moment, you have declared a state of emergency in this city because of homelessness. I want everyone in Paris, I mean, in Switzerland, who will vote on whether to pick this city over Paris and Rome, that Paris doesn't, isn't out of control with homelessness, Rome isn't out of control with homelessness, only Los Angeles is out of control with homelessness. Do not choose Los Angeles and send a billion dollars of IOC money over here, it will be wasted. No Olympics 2024, anybody but an Englander for supervisor, Austin Butner for mayor, and the city is out of control, and in honor of deaf, deaf people, this is what I think of the City of Los Angeles. Ask people who are deaf what this means. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Donna Peirman, followed by Byron Barajas.
Anyway, I wanted to thank people for voting for Barack Obama, so we can see destruction in America, yay, in Israel. Even Brad Sherman says that there's problems with their plan in 10 years, so we'll have the ability to have all the uranium and nuclear and destroy us. Even after nuclear, I'll have to learn how to do is close down the infrastructure. We were highly, we are highly computerized, like the subway today, hey, the subway, they shut down today in the middle of LA, making everybody scrambling for buses. Our mayor wants a great street initiative, a great mobility, but we don't have the capability to take everybody, most people out of their cars. Stop spending so much money on rail projects and more money on local buses. Reopen Van Nuys conferencing, so I don't have to be stranded in LA. Luckily, I found my way, this is not acceptable. What about people that are more highly disabled? They're going, if they went on the subway, all of a sudden, they just shut down and everybody had to get off, and, no, that's unacceptable.
Thank you, Donna. Next speaker is Byron Barajas.
Now, at our LaRouche PAC website, we just had a press conference in New York of a release of a report, which is based on the fraud of man-made climate change. I think the direction that we're heading in our New York Manhattan project is that people are realizing that if humanity is to survive, I think the issue here would be how to overthrow a British Empire's reign in science in order to depopulate the human species in this planet. Now, because of issues like, how do we fix a climate-changing situation, it's very simple, we have to produce technologies which will counteract any bad measures that climate has on you.
Next speaker, Eric Previn, followed by Henry Marin and Mr. Alcala.
Yes, Council President Martinez, and greetings, Council President Wesson. I know today there's some kind of a celebration, and Mr. Weezer is having something in the back, but, but I wanted to make a comment on item 39, and was not, my card was not accepted on the homelessness thing. I know we're all struggling, and I want to just emphasize that it seemed like about a month or six weeks ago, there was more of an appetite for steamrolling and scooping away homeless, and coming up with laws that Mike Fuer was confident would stand up the test of any challenge. But now, and I think it's subsequent to the Boise case, I don't know if resident listeners are aware of that case, but this was a case where the federal government felt the need to weigh in and say, you know, if we can't provide a place for people to go, we can't prosecute them as criminals. So it was kind of, I mean, I may be, that may be dumbed down a little bit, but it's something like that. And, you know, I went to a committee meeting this week for the first time in a long time, and I got one minute on the item, so I don't think that that's really the solution. So maybe the six-month proposal that I've made.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Henry Marin?
Yes, ongoing city hackler and county checks sent to private sector union trusts in MBOU-defined deductions account for every cent diverted from public employee pension and benefit plans in the past 26 years. Now, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Wesson, can I get your attention? Can I get anybody's attention? Everybody's overheating, side shows going on. If you can't pay attention, you can't pay your bills, you can't recover the money, you sent to the wrong place in the first place. Anybody, Mr., John Ching is his mentor. Now, John Ching is gonna be very disappointed when he get, has to go see the jury for diverting public funds from public employee pension and benefit plans longer than the law allows. Now, Mr. Rue, and Mr., you're the only two people that ain't sheltered our money past 90 days yet. You got till 28th of September. After that, you is as guilty as rest of these bastards in here.
Thank you, Mr. Juan Alcala.
Henry, it's absolutely right, nobody here is listening to anybody. You're not listening to the people. Krikorian, you arrogant fool, you're making too much money for your own ears. And the rest of you, I don't know what to say, when I become mayor, you're all fired. Donald Trump, when I become mayor, don't even come to LA, because you're not welcome. We don't need Nazis like Donald Trump running the world again, putting a border, a fence across the border, when we worked so hard to destroy the Berlin Wall and the bamboo curtain and all those other barriers. So why is that asshole coming here to put another barrier?
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment, can we move on to special one? By Mr. Buscayno? It's been circulated, I have a copy.
Let me see your back.
Did you, did everyone find their copy of motion special one?
And Madam President, Councilman Buscayno will speak to the findings.
Go ahead, Mr. Buscayno.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, on the afternoon of February, Friday, September 18th, after the posting of today's agenda, it came to the attention of my council office that the property immediately east of these buildings in this special one motion is for sale. And that bids are due on Tuesday, September 29th. This presents a unique opportunity for the City of Los Angeles, specifically for the Watch community, to obtain site control for four contiguous parcels of land and create a larger master plan for a block that will also contain the new Children's Institute campus designed by architect Frank Gehry. I ask for your support, and I vote to move the special one forward. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, we're taking up two votes. One on the findings and the second one on the motion. Can you open the roll? Close the roll? And tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now we're gonna vote on the motion itself. Open the roll? Close the roll? And tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
Item passes. Thank you. Okay, the last item is item 35. It was called special for cards.
Actually, item 35 was called special by Councilmember Blumenfield.
Mr. Blumenfield, would you like to speak first, or would you like me to take cards?
You can take the card.
Okay, thank you, sir. First speaker is Byron Barajas on item 35. Sir, are you here?
Okay. Is this one or two minutes? Okay. I think my point for this item is that everything that I said during my public comment pertains to this issue. You have a company called, I don't know if this is the correct way to pronounce it, Y Green Energy. But on their website, not only do they promote the greening of facilities, but if you look at their executive team, you see that these people love money. The chairman, Dennis Hunter, has 40 years of money-making. Stacy Lawson, CEO, also is interested in making money. Mike Carey, COO, again, in the financial business, markets. So like I said, the whole greening movement is just a matter of making money at the same time as you destroy economies. It's a very interesting ideology because the root of greenism is called Nazism or Eugenics, where mankind, that is you who have flesh and bone...
Mr. Barajas, you're speaking on item 35, sir.
Is that the, well, you're associating yourselves with this company, aren't you?
Sir, speak to the item.
I am. You have a company that loves the green ideology. Right, thank you. So that's the issue. We are all Americans here, and I think we should just dump this green fascism. Because that's what the issue is, Blumenfield. You want nuclear power, fusion energy? Dump these assholes.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker is Tyler Leibold. I'm sorry, Taylor Leibold. Sorry about that.
And Madam President, for the record, amended motion for item 35, amended motion 35A has been circulated.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Taylor Leibold from Energy Efficient Equity, a PACE administrator in partnership with the California Municipal Finance Authority. To date, the California Municipal Finance Authority has financed over $8 billion of public benefit projects, with 1.2 billion of that being financed in Los Angeles. As an LA-based company, we feel a strong commitment to the city and its communities. And we seek to equip LA property owners with the financing tool to make water and energy-efficient upgrades to their properties. Our commitment to our communities extends to our consumer protection and disclosure measures, which raise the standard for consumer protections in the industry. I want to thank the council, specifically the offices of Councilmembers Blumenfield and Sadio for their help in getting us this far. And I ask that this item be voted on today, given the need for water and efficient upgrades in the city. And thank you.
Next speaker, Mike Lemire. Followed by Mike Carey and Stacy Lawson. Mike Lemire is waving. Next speaker is Mike Carey. He's waving, waving back to you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker is Stacy Lawson.
Madam President and honorable counsel, my name is Stacy Lawson. I'm the president and CEO of Y Green Energy Fund. Thank you for having us on the agenda today. I stand before you offering the highest commitment of consumer protection and quality projects related to serving Los Angeles and your PACE program. In light of the emergency drought conditions, energy mandates, and the over 10,000 properties in Los Angeles that require seismic upgrades, we offer that expanding your PACE program to include companies like Y Green and others, empower citizens with the resources they need to take the actions necessary to meet the mandates that we're all shooting for. As part of the PACE program in California, as the leading commercial and multifamily PACE provider, and as the second-largest PACE offer in the, in the state, Y Green has been through rigorous RFP processes with over 30 municipalities. We've been approved by over 100 councils and boards as a top provider that upholds the highest standards in quality and consumer protection. And I am here to give you my absolute promise that we will continue to do that in service to the City of Los Angeles. I would like to express three major commitments. One, from the company, as a, as a leading provider and as a, as a company that will uphold the standards that we expect you would like us to. Second, as a capital provider in offering over $3 to $5 billion of green capital to help resource the mandates that are in front of us. And finally, a local commitment, as we have already hired a local team here, which will continue to grow. We have also trained and certified over 2,000 local contractors, and we have immediate projects ready to roll with your approval. So we look forward to serving you and ask for your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you, members. Very excited about this item that's before us, having to do with PACE financing and expanding our PACE program for seismic and bringing in more companies in. I think competition is really important when it comes to PACE. For me, I've been a big advocate of PACE for many years. In fact, the reason why I was not in council last week, it was, I was part of, I was abroad speaking about PACE at an international global conference about innovative financing for green building. And specifically, they asked me and two other international speakers to come talk about innovative financing. And PACE is that kind of a program. In fact, I was very involved back in '09. It was my bill, AB474, that took the pilot program of PACE, extended it to be a statewide program, expanded it for energy and water, and then we later expanded it for seismic. And it's, it's a great way to unlock capital that, that is out there in order to do green building, to do water conservation, and now especially to do seismic retrofitting, which we're gonna have to do because of new mandates. And hopefully, the governor's gonna sign some incentives. And so we're gonna see a lot more folks wanting to enter the PACE market. And that's good, because competition is good. Currently, we have two PACE providers that are run through the county. But that process frankly is going a little too slow to get as many folks as we wanted into the process. So we have an amendment here on 35A, and I want to explain the reason for that amendment, which is it's adding in some consumer protections. Because while the PACE program is fantastic, and it allows for more capital, it also, it is a lean on someone's home potentially. And we don't, we, there's, there potentially in the future could be predatory lending problems and all sorts of issues. And we want to make sure that we have some control over the consumer protection. Not so much for the companies that are coming in. They are major companies that have a great track record. And so it's, it's not about them. It's about setting a precedent for the onslaught of other PACE providers that are gonna be coming to the city in the future once we move forward and approve these folks. So it's, the amendment in here is to give the city leverage so that we can impose consumer protections as needed, on an as-needed basis. The county has that leverage in their PACE programs. And because this is a different PACE through the state, we want to make sure that we ensure that leverage. Mr. Sadio and I work together to come up with this language as before you on the amendment. I think it's, it's good language, it's simple, and it reserves our right to have important consumer protections without prescribing what those protections are. So bottom line is, we've got two new PACE participants coming in. Excited about that, excited about getting more folks here because we have a lot of work to do in front of us when it comes to our businesses and homes and getting energy efficiency, water efficiency, and seismic efficiency. And these PACE providers can help do that and can help unlock a tremendous amount of capital. And I ask for your eye vote on the amendment and on the underlying bill.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. There are no more speakers on the queue. Let's vote on this as amended. Open the roll? Close the roll? And tabulate the vote?
Thirteen eyes.
Item passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for post and referral.
Post and referred?
That clears the desk.
Members, any announcements? I see none. Let's all rise, please, for adjourned motions. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that we adjourn today in the honor of Irene Quatrin Lichtenstein. She passed away in her 90th year. She's a loving mother of Ellen Kogut, Deborah Moskowitz, Richard Lichtenstein, and the late Amy Graham. Cherished grandmother Pamela, Rachel, Charlie, John, Jessica, Daniel, Matthew, and Dylan. A great mother as adored as Gigi by Zoe, Julian, and Jordan. A treasured and loyal friend to many in Great Neck, San Diego, Lenox, and New York City. Irene was passionate about art, bridge, movies, tennis, theater, travel, and all liberal causes. She lived a life well-loved, and she will be missed by all those who know her. And we adjourn her honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Rue?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President, Madam President. There's something truly heartbreaking about losing someone who gave every bit of time and energy to those around them, especially those whose time and energy was devoted to children. Nettie Ruth Thompson Gotu, Gotu, was born in Morton, Missouri, the third youngest sibling, third youngest of eight siblings. She attended Clark Junior High, where she met her husband Tad, and graduated from Blue Mountain College. Nettie moved to Downey in 1961, earned a master's in education from Cal State University, Los Angeles, and was employed by Downey Unified School District as an elementary school teacher and administrator for more than 30 years. She devoted her career and life to every child and every parent that walked through her classroom door, teaching children to read and coaching parents on the need to teach at home. Nettie is survived by her husband of 52 years, Tad Gotu, sisters Gladys Franklin, Thelma Franklin, Betty Still, and her brother Billy Thompson. And her daughter, daughter Stephanie McMon, and Stephanie's husband Scott and Vicky Gotu. I don't know if many of you know Vicky, but she used to work for the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, and now she's with the California Foundation and a dear personal friend of mine. And Nettie's grandchildren, Colin and Carol McMon. A service is being held at the First Baptist Church of Downey on Saturday, September 26th at 1:00 PM, followed by a reception in Fellowship Hall. In Leo Flowers, donations could be made to the Downey City Library's Children's Department. Thank you.
Any other adjourned motions on my right? Seeing none on my left, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to, like us to adjourn in the memory of a great San Fernando leader, Roberta Boardman. She, Roberta Boardman, she was a mother, a grandmother, a sister, a friend. She passed away peacefully with her family by her side on September 18th after a long illness from lung cancer. She was born and raised in the San Fernando Valley to Robert Shannon and Juliet Butts. She's a self-proclaimed original Valley girl. She started her volunteer career as a girl watching her attorney father dabble in political campaigns. But she became very involved in political campaigns. And many of you who probably have been to some of the Action Democrats, they would often, almost always have their meetings at her house, and she would sponsor meetings for these events. She was a leader in the community, involved with so many good organizations, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the San Fernando Valley Girl Scout Council, Haven Hills, West Valley Pals, Guadalupe Youth Center, Sherwood Forest Homeowners Association, League of Women Voters, the Zoo Association, the Valley Chapter of Now, just to name a few. She was incredibly active. She was also part of the city family. And folks who've been around for a while may remember her. She served as deputy for Los Angeles council members Joy Picas and Joel Wax. She also served as a consultant with Delphi Associates, the executive director of the Tarzana Chamber of Commerce, and the Office of the California State PTA. She survived by her children, Bridget, Julie, Wendy, and Robert, nine grandchildren and three great-grandchildren, twin sisters Shannon Silverman and Virginia Kelly. She has many family and friends. She now is joining her departed soulmate, who many of us here probably knew, Dallas Boardman. He left us in '09. Their ashes will be joined together and scattered at Point Lobus over the winds of the Pacific Ocean. May Roberta Boardman rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a good day.